Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and James is going to lead us tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Number three, presentations.
Our first presentation is from the group who went to Akeruno, so I'd like to invite them up to give a presentation to the school committee.
I have the chaperones and kids behind me, please. Look, that thing went out. This is...
Oops.
Oh, did it? It's okay.
No signal?
Is it okay?
No.
Believe me, it's an awful thing when you look for help behind you and there's no one there.[56.04][56.04](Laughter)
Oh, I know.
I know you don't.
That's your mask. Okay. Good evening. My name is Rupal Patel and I am the Whitcomb Akeruno Exchange Program Advisor. This year, we sent 12 students representing the varied culture and diversity of Marlborough to Akeruno with three chaperones, Angela House, Eileen Barry, and Ben Hatch. The students had been working since they were chosen last February to prepare for this trip, holding multiple fundraisers and meeting every Wednesday morning at 7:15 to learn Japanese language and about the culture of our sister city. None of this preparation would have been possible without the help of Ayako Barnum, who volunteered her time to help me prepare the kids. This trip is something I could not do without her, so, thank you. On October 11th, the students and chaperones left with some very honored guests, Michelle Boden-Hettenger, Heidi Matthews, Brian Daniels, and the person responsible for making sure there would be a 20th anniversary to celebrate, Nancy Klein, who along with Don Landers initiated the program 20 years ago. I hope you were able to see for yourselves what Nancy and I have known for a few years now, that Akeruno City is a special place filled with special people. I have said this before, 6,000 miles away, there is a place where Marlborough, Massachusetts is the most important place in the United States. For the 12 days they are there, the students and chaperones are the most important people in the country. Hundreds of students and families have benefited from the program in both our cities since 1998, including my own family. And with the continued help and support of the city, school committee, and superintendent, I hope to continue Nancy's work along with Ayoko and allow many more to benefit from the program. At this time, I'm going to invite the students who went to say a few words and the chaperones as well.
Hi, my name is Kelly Clemente. First off, I want to start off, I want to start by saying that I was privileged and honored to embark on a life, on once-in-a-lifetime experience that will remain with me throughout many years, that and that I will never forget. I made a lifelong friendships that will continue to grow through upcoming years. Everyone in Akeruno was super welcoming, nice, caring. I can go on expressing their hospitality. I loved how my family took me in as if I was their own daughter. Everything about Honami and her family made me feel as if I was home, from their attention to details in planning out different adventures and family bonding time. An experience I will never forget was school life. The school system in Japan is very much different from back home. In a sense, the students do the majority of the cleaning responsibilities. The students did the cleaning of the classroom. During lunchtime, we prepared and handed out lunch. As you can see, this is something that we aren't used to, but I was definitely, it was definitely a unique experience. Here back home, we are grateful enough to have janitors and lunch ladies who can take on the responsibility that students in Japan do themselves. I can definitely say, this experience has showed me how different life can be all over the world, and that not two countries are the same, which makes this experience once-in-a-lifetime. I am greatly appreciative to have been a part of such a great program. If I were given the opportunity, I would do it again.
Thank you.
Sophie, you can pull it down. There you go.
Hello, my name is Sophie Burgess, and I feel incredibly blessed to have been able to go to Akeruno City with Whitcomb School. I have made lifelong friendships and experienced the culture of Japan. Despite being miles and miles away from Japan, I still talk to my host family and the kids from school almost every single day. Going to Japan made me realize just how different people are. For example, the schools are one of the many things that are different from what we do. They don't have any buses to get to school, they have to walk every single day. Secondly, they don't have janitors or lunch ladies. The kids do the cleaning and serve lunch. Their school days are way longer than ours. I was coming back from school at 6:00 and sometimes even 7:00 o'clock. They also have to wear school uniforms. Girls and boys have to wear the same thing. And honestly, this was way better than trying to find a cute outfit that matched the morning of. Even though we do things very differently, the most important thing that I learned from this whole trip is that everyone was super caring and kind. They didn't judge you for being different. They took you under their wing like you were their own child. They're super nice and welcoming. Not just the host families were like this, though. To the kids at school, to the random people walking down the street, and to the cashier at Family Mart. Everyone is just incredibly nice to everyone. Even though we might do everything a lot different, this was one of the, this was the one thing that stood out to me was this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maria Luisa Beretta. From my trip to Japan, I learned that people there are very, are one of the nicest people ever, and that being nice to other people make them feel very happy. Going to the, to Japan impacted my life by seeing, seeing and realizing that just a smile can make someone's day much better. In Japan, I got to experience a lot of different things that I've never done in my life. And I'm still in contact with all of my family and friends there that I made now. And I'm really glad that I got this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Jacqueline Cruz. While visiting Japan, I noticed how everyone was kind to me. It wasn't just my host family or my classmates, but strangers. Their thoughtfulness and kindness in helping me every day, like how my host siblings included me in every game, or how a stranger kindly showed me where the bathroom was, made me learn that by just acting kind, it will always bring someone's day, including mine. Those days impacted me by understanding the importance of kindness because of everyone's kindness in Japan. Because of this, I try being kind to everyone I meet, since their kindness really helped me. I want to thank my host family and everyone who helped me with this, because it was a lifetime experience that I will always remember. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cassandra Goboa. What I learned from this experience, experience was I needed to be more welcoming to other people I don't know, because the people that were back in Japan welcomed me into everything they participated in. Another thing I really think that I took from this was I, I needed to appreciate everything I had back here, because the, they didn't have the same opportunities that they had back over there. And over here, we take, we don't take advantage of the opportunities that we have over here, and we just ignore them and work like around them. And then, another thing that I took from this is that I needed to be nicer to my brothers. And then, because I saw that the, there's my host sisters and their siblings never fought in, and then, they helped me have a better relationship with my brothers, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Keely Neronia. I feel so grateful that I was able to visit Akeruno. I, I got to experience a different culture, meet new people, see new things, and be able to make lifelong friendships. I knew that while I was in Japan, that things would be different, but I didn't know that not just my host family, but all the kids were so nice and so welcoming. I knew things were also going to be different in their school life. While we take a bus or get driven to school, they walk to school. My host sister would tell me stories and, about the culture there and show me the different buildings that were on the way to school. But one of the things that I noticed, not just in Japan, but, or, or America, but all around the world too, is that when someone comes into their house, they love them and care for them as if they were their own child. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cilis Jamal, and I stay with the Honda family, whose kindness helped me survive in Japan, and whose mother guided me. Japan was wonderful. I could go on and on about all the cool and interesting things I saw, the food I ate, the people I met, but it's more than just a visit to a different country. It's learning about other cultures and understanding, there's a whole world out there with different people and different cultures. The Japanese are obviously different than us, but what's important is to take in what they do and notice how it affects their daily lives, and how they act, and how much differently their daily lives are. What impacted me the most was how connected they are to their past. I visited many shrines there, and it was fascinating to see them. Here, you don't see as many places as old as the shrines there, how they kept them looking fine. They respect their past deeply. Before the Japan, I didn't really think about history that much, but now, I find myself researching it more. Also, I looked at my future. In Japan, we saw messages from people who went to Japan and how it affected their lives, and now they work in abroad and other countries other than just America, and hope one day I might be able to go a different country, work and live in a different country. I thank you, thank you for giving me this rare process, this rare perspective into a different culture.
Thank you.
My name is Connor Hurley. I am 13 and now in 8th grade. On this exchange trip to Japan, I changed by valuing my friendships more, knowing how big and important good friends can help, you can rely on, are in your life. I value this more because I made many friends in Japan and treasure each one. I realize that I should treasure all the friendships I have in America more. This trip helped me learn more and become a much better person. I learned important life skills and gained valuable knowledge. I had an amazing time and hope this program lasts longer and benefits many others like it did for me. I'll definitely remember this for the rest of my life. Had a huge impact on so many things for me. Thank you for this opportunity. Oyasumi.
Hello, my name is Kevin. I am in 8th grade and 13. One of the things I took away from this experience was that to be open to other people and trying new, and trying new things, like learning new languages that are very different from English. And to respect other people when they are trying to speak the same language that you speak, but don't speak it very well. I loved how everyone is so independent at their schools, and that they have no one or any adult to help them with their daily life experiences like eating and cleaning. I loved this experience and want to go back one day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Starr. I am from another family that... Hello, my name is Jasmine Starr. I learned different ways to school because there's a certain plan that's, that's expected in Japan, and you are not constantly rushed with... And then, your fam, families take care of someone that they don't know and treats you like a daughter or a son. And you're never really alone. And you'll spend hours with your host family, even though, even if you, you're never alone. However, our parents let us be alone for hours, and we don't... And... I'm done.
Thank you.
Alabasca once said that airline travel is hours of boredom interrupted by moments of stark terror. I didn't see the stark terror, but I certainly saw the hours of boredom. Hello, my name is Therese Costco. I'm in the 7th grade at Whitcomb Middle School. Going to Akeruno, Japan was a dream come true, but the three things that I will take away from this experience are the respect and how well they treated each other, how well my host family treated me, and cultural differences. To elaborate on my first point, the respect, it was incredible. They were silent in class, and that's not something you see every day here. They were trying their best to learn and to get the education they need. They were focused, and did what the teachers and adults asked when they asked. That leads me to my second point, how my host family treated me. They were by far one of, if not the, kindest people I have ever met. When I, when I forgot the hand fan I bought there, they took, they went out of their way to mail it back to me. How many people do you know that would take the time and money to mail you something you left halfway across the world? Not many, I bet. Also, when we found out that my host sister Chihiro and I had the same birthday, they threw us a birthday party with some of Chihiro's friends. It was something special that I will never forget. That brings me to my last area, cultural differences. They will either drive you apart or bring you together, and thankfully, in my case, we were brought together. We had so much fun trying new things and learning about each other's cultures. The first day I went home with my host family, we did three straight hours of origami, something that I had dabbled on a little bit back home, but not much. Even though I was not very good, we ended up having lots of fun together. Another cultural difference was that before each meal, they say itadakimasu, and after they say gochosamadesha. And when they come back home, they say tadaima. To summarize, among many other things, I will always remember the respect and how well they treat each other, how well my host family treated me, and the cultural differences. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jackson Clemmons. In Japan, I learned how much you should appreciate the loved ones in your life and around you. While I was there, everyone treated each other much better than they do over here. This was something that I thought was amazing, considering how much we take one another for granted over here. And over there, everyone got treated the same, no matter what they looked like or what they do. It's also easier to find connection and, connections and form bonds, while it takes a longer over here, because we aren't as aware of how we affect others with our actions. The school system was also something that I found interesting. Instead of teachers staying in one classroom, they move around with the students. The attention of the students was also really well. Over here, the behavior of the students is much worse. No one spoke up, and they did work efficiently. The lunch system was also some, the lunch system was also something that surprised me. The fact that the students served and cleaned up was something that I thought was amazing. The students also made sure the homeroom they were staying in was clean, and if it wasn't, they would clean it up at the end of the day, something that very few people here would do. I, I also, when I visited downtown Tokyo, I noticed how a lot more people were willing to walk and bike to places. The students also walked to school, and if they didn't, then they biked. This shows how energy efficient they are overseas. The schedule was also some, pretty different. After-school activities go till about 5:30 or later. After that, we had dinner. Dinner felt like one of the moments they really treasured. What, what they eat is a lot healthier and overall better for you. It doesn't really make you worry about how you are and what you do. The living spaces were also very compact, and what would be a two-way street over there was, would be a one-way street over here. This all just shows how if they use their space to the fullest. Despite all the differences, there were some similarities. When we got home, we did laundry, then got ready for school the next day. The school also had similar subjects and after-school clubs such as baseball, band, and much more. What I saw in Tokyo isn't that far off from what you would see in Boston. There are many skyscrapers and aquarium and a rural area. One of the best parts for me was the sights. Mount Fuji was amazing, and no matter how many times I saw it, it never ceased to amaze me. I go to New Hampshire a few times a year, and Mount Fuji compared to Mount Washington was incredible. Tokyo Skytree was also a sight to behold. The, the way it towered over all the other buildings was really cool. The water features in the mountainous area were also breathtaking. On the weekend, I went fishing, and the river was beautiful. I also went on a hike the first day with my host family, and the waterfall at the end was worth it. Overall, the trip changed my life. I highly doubt that I will ever forget the friends I made across the world or the lessons I took away from it. The lifestyle and friendships over there are much different, and I think that anyone would take away from this trip.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Hatch. I just wanted to say, state that, I just wanted to start by saying, it was an honor to represent Whitcomb School and the city of Marlborough for the 20-year celebration of the Cultural Exchange Program. The trip to Akeruno City was a great opportunity to see the Japanese culture, temples, and their way of life. This was my second time to experience the Culture Exchange Program, and each time, I was overwhelmed by the Japanese people generosity and kindness. The Exchange Program is 20 years old, and with you, with your help, it will last another 20 years. So that being said, I would like to thank everyone that made this trip possible for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Angela House. I was one of the chaperones to be lucky enough to travel with these 12 students to Japan. I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to go. For me, it was my first time, and I can truly say it was a lifetime experience that you don't understand until you're in those shoes. These 12 students behind me showed every characteristic we would want for our students to show to the Japanese schools, to the authorities there. They were strong and brave. They made speeches in Japanese. They lived with host families for 12 days and had to find ways to communicate. I think they were role models of what we are here in Marlborough, and I think it was a great selection of students to show our diversity and who we really are here. I'm excited to see where the next 20 years go, and I'm excited to be a part of it now. So, thank you.
Brian Daniels, principal at Marlborough, and lucky enough to share in the official part of the trip and represent Marlborough onstage. In Akeruno, the city and our connection to the city is much honored, and we saw that at every turn. Not being a chaperone for the first time in my life traveling with students, I had the opportunity to more sit back and watch them soak in another culture. I firmly believe that the world shrinks, and so do the barriers that separate us when we travel. So I'm very proud of this program and know that with the city and the school system's support, it will continue for many years. Thank you for the opportunity. It was an honor.
So, just a few more minutes. I'm gonna end this, sorry, with something that Michelle kind of asked me to show. At the 20th anniversary, they had a video that was shown to the 200-something people. It included some excerpts from students' past, and so hopefully, it will start from the point that I wanted it to start, but it may not. So I'm gonna start it from a couple of students who have been from Marlborough and who have come to Marlborough. Hopefully, this works. I have no sound, though.
My name is Madison Steinman. I'm from Marlborough, and I hosted a student from Akeruno in 2010. I am a student at Boston College, and I am studying secondary education in English with a concentration in teaching English language learners. Participating in the program has created a lifelong friendship, because I still continue to communicate with the student that I hosted, Tomy Satchow, and she has come back to visit me a few times outside of the program, and I've actually gone to visit her in Japan, which was a really interesting experience. Being a host is also one of the reasons why I decided to become a teacher to teach English language learners.
I am Jill Cassoy, and I traveled to Akeruno and hosted in 2014. I hosted again in 2017. I'm going into my senior year of high school. Through this program, I further discovered my love for travel as well as meeting new people. I learned that communication is not always through words, but through gestures and laughter.
Oops, sorry. So, again, we're going to end our presentation, but thank you all for representing Marlborough. Thank you to Nancy for making this the program that it is. Thank you to the chaperones, Mr. Daniels, and the students who represented Marlborough well. Yeah. And thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just want to add one thing to this. When we, the Japanese, for anyone who is familiar with this culture, spend a lot of time giving people gifts. And I know, I personally, with Heidi, when we got to go this time, brought 35 gifts with us. And when we were there, we presented a gift to the city of Akeruno from the city of Marlborough, as well as I brought something from our mayor to give to their mayor, and this is what their mayor sent to give to you.
Thank you. That's as close as I'm getting to a Super Bowl trophy. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Great.
Okay, and we'll keep going with the meeting. And a little bit different tonight, we actually have a communication from someone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to just put on the record that I received a letter from Mr. Lowell George I'd like to just put on the record that I received a letter from Mr. Lowell Jorg. Mr. Jorg is from Stockton, California, and he sent a postcard that he had found at a local antique store of our Walker Building. And Mr. Jorg also gave a letter. I'd like to just briefly read it. It's a short letter, and just to have the school committee, I can pass this around for you to look. "I hope this letter brightens your day. I was at an antique store here and found this old circa 1908 picture showing your beautiful high school of that era. It's an old-time classic for sure, so I said to myself, 'By golly, I think I'll send it home where it can be appreciated.' Our heritage is important to us and should be preserved. Lots of changes, I suppose, too. Enlarged and posted up, it will cause some nice conversation." Well, I gave it, I gave $6 for it, and if you want it for seven or eight, I think that's okay. Throw in a little postage if you want. I enjoy souvenirs, too. "My wife used to laugh to me and say, 'If you hear from them, you'll have to take me out to lunch.' I turned 90 on June 26, and I'm going strong as far as I know. I like to call my little hobby a redistribution of happiness. Our world sure needs it. Thank you, Godspeed, and have a great Thanksgiving Day, Lowell Jorg." And what he had sent is this old card. It's an old postcard showing the Walker Building, and the stamp on it is from the circa of the 1900s. So he also wrote, "P.S. I picked your address off the net. If I wrote before and forgot, please forgive me. Oh, my daughter says you can find me on Google, but I never look." So I'd like to just pass that around so people can take a look at it.
Great. Thank you very much.
And you want to tell folks what you did in return?
We did purchase said postcard, and we also sent Mr. Jorg a nice MPS shirt for his troubles as well. So hopefully he enjoys that.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure tonight to recognize two students with my ability to do this for the Mass Association of School Superintendents. And there's two awards that I will be recognizing. Additionally, I'm gonna have Mr. Riley come up and recognize two students from NESDEC for awards as well. And I've also asked Mr. Bishop and Mr. Travers to be here to recognize students as well from the high school. So I'd like to start by recognizing Eliana Greenstein-Hemle. Please come on up to the mic. I'm now gonna embarrass you with all the great work you've done. So what we asked is, we asked staff members to provide a brief recommendation for the award. So what I'm gonna do is read off the recommendation, and I will tell you, I will probably have to stop for water. This is, this is so lengthy. So Eliana is exceptional, excellence, ambitious, and artistic is how I would describe her. She is an exceptionally bright and academically gifted student who ranked second in her class. Her lowest grade in high school has been an A. She strives for excellence in everything she does, setting high expectations and putting her full effort into everything she does. Eliana was a member of our 9th and 10th-grade STEM early college high school program, which focuses on science, technology, engineering, and math in a project-based learning model. She credits this model with teaching her leadership, problem-solving, cooperation, and teamwork, as well as research and public speaking skills. As a junior, she completed two college-level English classes through our early college partnership with Quinn-Sigman Community College. Last year, Eliana earned her gold award through Girl Scouts. Her project was creating a STEM-themed week at the local Boys and Girls Club, where she has worked for the past four summers as a camp counselor, counselor in training. She designed seven STEM-related activities for that week and 20 more activities and lesson plans to be implemented in the future. She utilized her outstanding interpersonal, attention-to-detail, and organizational skills. She learned when to delegate responsibilities and when to take control. The STEM activities were extremely well-received by the campers, and she hopes she ignited interest in the STEM fields in these youngsters. She is still active in scouting and is serving as an ambassador Girl Scout. She has been the number-one Girl Scout cookie seller in Marlborough for many years, selling over 1,000 boxes of cookies every year. Outside of the classroom, Eliana is the captain of the color guard, which utilizes her leadership and teamwork skills to bring the members together to perform at their best. She plays the oboe in Wind Ensemble and is in our select a cappella choir ensemble. She's a talented singer, and last year was selected for the Central District Choir. Throughout high school, she has been a member of Hazamir, an international Jewish teen choir, and has performed at Carnegie Hall, Lincoln Center, and the Met in New York City. She's a member of our drama club and has performed at Desert Theater and in the Spring Musical throughout high school. She is the co-president of the book club and serves as librarian for the Wind Ensemble. Eliana has participated in community service activities through Girl Scouts, making blankets for children in hospitals, and Relay for Life. Eliana has earned faculty awards in math, Mandarin Chinese, and music. She's a member of the National Honor Society and Tri-M Music Honor Society. She earned the Mathematician of the Year as a sophomore. Eliana plans to major in architecture, offering her the opportunity to be creative as she investigates structural possibilities in a field she loves. Eliana is one of the most outstanding young women I've ever met and worked with. She would be an asset to any learning community. She is creative, curious, ambitious, organized, and hardworking. I hope I have been able to convey her talents and passion for excellence. I recommend her enthusiastically. So with that, it is my pleasure to recognize her with an award from the Mass Association of School Superintendents for a Certificate of Academic Excellence. Next, I'd like to recognize Morgan Ron. Passionate, curious, and forward-thinking, Morgan exemplifies all the qualities of a high academic achiever and positive role model for the student body at Marlborough High School. Since her freshman year, Morgan has challenged herself with a rigorous course load of honors and AP classes, having earned all As with an overall GPA of 4.85 and is ranked first in the senior class. Morgan takes her studies very seriously and has excelled in every aspect of her academic career at Marlborough High School. Morgan's innate ability to grasp concepts quickly and unbelievable work ethic will make her a worthy addition to any college or university she chooses to attend. Morgan has a strong desire to study biology in college with an eventual goal of attending medical school. As if Morgan's academic accolades weren't impressive enough, Morgan has been the class president for the last four years, is a three-sport varsity athlete playing soccer, indoor track, and lacrosse, and has also spent the last three years volunteering with Jambo Tanzania, a humanitarian organization that works to help developing African villages. We are excited of what the future has in store for Morgan and know that she will make the most out of every opportunity that college has to offer. And again, it's my pleasure to present Morgan with a certificate of academic excellence for the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents.
I just want to thank everyone, especially our administration, because as you said, with the whole class president thing, it's definitely not a one-person job, so everything that I've been able to do has been largely due in part to the great staff at our school, and my family, and everyone around me. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now I'd like to invite up Dan Riley, the principal of Marlborough High School, where he's also going to present two more awards for NESDEC, which actually is here, and he has three awards, I'm sorry, that he's going to be presenting.
Thank you. It's my privilege to be here tonight to recognize these amazing seniors. The NESDEC Award of the National School Development Council is presented to seniors who have consistently pursued a high level of academic effort and who have also served as positive role models for the student body. Recipients of the award exemplify admirable character and accomplishment. So the first senior I'd like to invite up with me tonight is Lou Vigent, the first recipient of this award. I'm gonna say a few words about Lou. Lou is a student who is well-liked by both his peers and faculty. He is charismatic, studious, and outgoing young man who is highly involved in the Marlborough High community. Lou is captain of the varsity football team, as well as a member of the Central Mass All-Star Team. Since 6th grade, Lou has volunteered his time to assist during the Special Olympics and work with students on Unified Track each spring. Throughout high school, he has challenged himself by taking all honors and advanced placement-level courses. Lou has maintained a cumulative 4.638 GPA and is ranked in the top of his graduating class. Lou, it's our pleasure to recognize you tonight. The next senior I'd like to invite up is Hallie McCabe. Hallie is one of, is a one-of-a-kind student athlete. She is a natural-born leader who is both studious and understanding. Hallie is a calming sense about her that allows her to easily, that is, to be easily relatable to students and faculty alike. Hallie challenges herself academically by taking numerous advanced placement classes and is determined in the classroom as she is on the field in the court. She currently has a 4.68 GPA and is ranked number eight in her class of about 300 students. Along with her academic success, Hallie's had several successes on the field and the court. She was named to the All-State and All-New England All-Star Soccer Teams as a sophomore and junior at Marlborough High School, along with her selection to the Midwok League All-Star Team. She has been voted to the Central Mass All-Star the past two years and is currently a nominee to the 2018 High School All-American Team. Hallie was a standout basketball player her freshman and sophomore years, earning League All-Star status as well as Central Mass All-Star. Hallie has volunteered and mentored at our elementary schools, participating in walking school bus, field days, and has worked with our middle school teams as she is an ambassador for her sport. Hallie was selected to participate in the MIAA Sportsmanship Summit at Gillette Stadium and is a Midwok Student Ambassador. Congratulations, Hallie. It's our pleasure to recognize you.
This is informal. We can make this happen. Bring up my notes.
While you're looking at your notes, I have to say, I went to a soccer game this year with my wife, and all she could kept saying was, "Who was that?" That was Hallie. I'd now like to invite up Tatiana Barthold. Our third recognition tonight. The DAR Good Citizens Award and Scholarship Contest was created in 1934 and is intended to encourage and reward the qualities of good citizenship. This award recognizes and rewards individuals who possess the qualities of dependability, service, leadership, and patriotism in their homes, schools, and communities. These students are selected by their teachers and peers because they demonstrate these qualities to an outstanding degree. Caring, hard-working, and considerate, those are the qualities that embody Tatiana, a young woman with incredible academic and musical talent. Academically, she is ranked in the top of her class with an overall GPA of 3.97. She has a real desire to study mechanical engineering in college, and her commitment to involving herself in as many STEM-related programs shows her true dedication to the field that she truly loves. Along with STEM-related courses, Tatiana has also excelled in all of her other courses, taking AP Language and AP Literature and Composition and all other honors-level courses. With Tatiana's work ethic and her commitment to her academics, she is sure to excel when she goes off to college. Outside of the academic classroom, Tatiana is incredibly talented, is an incredibly talented musician. She is a member of our mixed chorus, our a cappella choir, and Voices, in the Voices Reacquired Ensemble Group. Tatiana is president of all three performance groups and is historian of the Tri-M Music Honor Society. Tatiana has received multiple awards at various singing competitions with the school groups and is looking forward to competing again this year. Along with music, Tatiana is also a member of the National Honor Society, a member of the Drama Club, and holds a part-time job at the local library. How do you do all that? Tatiana has truly emerged as a leader here at MHS, and we are so excited for what the future has to offer her. Okay, now on to our John and Abigail Adams Scholarship recipients. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts has created this merit scholarship program to reward hard work and achievement by Massachusetts students and to encourage students to go to college at one of our top-notch public higher education institutions. The scholarship entitles the recipient to four years of free tuition at any University of Massachusetts campus or any state or community college. This choice is based on outstanding MCAS results. So at this time, I'd like to bring up Mr. Travers and Mr. Bishop, who are gonna help us go through, ready for this? The 72 seniors that have received this wonderful recognition in this award.
All right, here we go. I need to use the restroom before we start. Could take a while. We have Gabrielle Als, we have Inez Ariel Aralano, excuse me, Noel Bass, Justin Bates, Connor Bogle, Andy Benina, Matthew Conditto, Dominic Carter, Brandon Cavallo, Gabriela Cavallo, Amanda Carwood, Emma Coy, Kevin Cruz, Larissa Di Almedo, Esther Di Arajo, Gillian Dion, Jao Victor De Val, Ethan Drakulik, I hope he's not here because I might have mispronounced that, Samantha Edwards, Madison Farrell, Mateus Fonseca, Tim Gallagher, Isaac Gomez, Philippe Gonzalez, Eliana Greenstein-Himmel? Did I say that correctly? Greenstein-Himmel, I'm sorry. Alice Harvies, Jordan Harding, Colin Hennessy. Congratulations. Kimberly Human, Samantha, excuse me, Samuel Johnston, Katie Genau, hang on a second, Christina Kearns, lost my place, Joseph LaFollette, Miguel Lopez Rivera, Nikki Luis, Samantha Lucero, Ryan Lynch.
So Jaylen Kasoy, Alexandra Messina, Roberta McPherson, Hallie McCabe, Jao Victor Mendez, Liam Minucci, Lauren Monday, Sarah Nim, Michael O'Donnell, Brandon Petano, Nick Patel, Carter Paul, Matthew Pearl, Daniel Pereira, Max Peverman, Christopher Putnam, Olivia Rainville, Morgan Ron, Hersen Reese, Andrea Rivera, Hannah Romaine, Anthony Salome, Kara Shanahan, Carrie Seibel, Kayla Silverio, Abigail Silverman, Madeline Silverman, Benjamin Simmons, Henry Stansik, Ryan Strassel, Andrew Sullivan, Joseph Taft, Jack Tobin, Bianca Varela, and last but not least, Lou Vigent.
Thank you again for the chance to recognize the outstanding accomplishments of these seniors. They're absolutely amazing, and they're what makes Marlborough High so great, so thank you.
Thank you.
One thing I have to point out, there are about nine or 10 kids on that list that actually were part of the Accoruno program, so I just want to say that this helps to provide platforms for doing big things, you know, so, good for Accoruno one more time.
Thank you for everyone who came tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We just have a quick finance and operations update for you tonight. We continue to work on the FY '20 budget, and part of that is proposing a budget calendar for this year. It's very similar to the calendar that we had last year. The only difference here is that the budget workshop we are proposing to do at the day following the school committee meeting starts off the same day at the school committee meeting so that we have enough time to discuss the budget with you guys. Again, so that's for your consideration. Cafeteria balances are stable as of last month at $3,500 compared to about $2,600 at the same period last year. Jenna and I continue to work on making sure that this number is under control. And good news, on November 13th and 14th, we had Mass Bowl Consultants visit the district and perform a review of our transportation operations. They talked with central office leadership, school leadership, as well as our transportation provider. They'll be giving us a formal report with some recommendations that I'll be sharing with the superintendent. And that's all.
Questions in the committee, Ms. Matthews.
Overall, I don't have a problem with the dates, but I'm, again, one of seven, but the only thing that I have a concern with is voting before a public hearing. We have this conversation, I think, every year, and we didn't used to have it. It's only been the last few years.
Well, okay, so the last few years, we've had this conversation, and so I would like to see that vote happen after the public hearing on the 26th. I don't think, I think the public's entitled to have their say prior to our vote.
I agree. I don't see any purpose for a public hearing if we're going to vote before the public hearing.
I guess the only thing I'd ask then is that we at least, if we don't have a vote, we at least move a budget forward, because what we have to do is we have to publish the budget number in the paper and do those types of things, so if it's not a vote, that's okay, but we need to have a number that we can move forward to the public hearing. So if that's just an accepted, we're ready to move forward with this, doesn't have to be a vote, but something of that nature.
So, I mean, the, if after the public hearing, the public has convinced us to act differently, what happens to that number? Is it still changeable?
Change it.
We can still change it before it goes to the mayor.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I'm fine with that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Minutes of October 9th, 2018.
Motion to accept October 9th minutes.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Minutes of October 23rd and November 13th, 2018.
Motion to approve October 23rd and November 13th with, at changes that were submitted by Ms. Bowden Hettinger.
Motion made and seconded to approve October 23rd and November 13th as amended. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Public participation? Public participation? Public participation? Seeing none. MOA for the School Administrative Office Support Association.
So we met an executive session earlier this evening and voted on the memorandum of understanding between the Marlboro School Committee and the MSA/OSA expiring, which expired this past August, and this is a renewal for 2018 to 2021, and we voted to ratify the agreement. So motion to ratify in public session as well.
Motion made and seconded to approve the contract. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. New position, Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Mayor, if it pleases the committee, we can table this because I said I was going to bring it in December, but just as a reminder, I will be asking the committee to approve a new position for principal for the yet-to-be-named elementary school on Porrier Road. So you can consider this a reminder, and if I can request, maybe table this until the next meeting, because in my last minutes, I said I would be bringing it then and not now, so, apologize for the clerical error.
Contain a motion.
Move to table.
Motion made and seconded to table until the next executive, next regularly scheduled meeting. All those in favor?
Wait, discussion?
No, there is no discussion on the table.
Not on the table.
All those in favor?
Why?
Opposed, carries.
Okay.
Policies.
Because that's what Robert's rules dictate.
So we're moving on to policies. So as you all know, there were a number of policies that were presented for first read at the last school committee meeting, and I am bringing forward a bunch of them tonight. I have not heard back from anyone with any concerns, so hopefully we can move on through, but obviously, should you have any questions, please feel free to bring something up. So I'd like to make a motion to approve policy number 2.310, which is organization of the school committee.
Motion made and seconded to approve 2.310. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries.
Thank you. I'd like to move forward policy number 2.331, duties of the mayor's chairperson.
It's absolute correct.
Notice that word's not in there.
Motion made and seconded to approve number 2.331. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, carries.
Thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to move forward policy number 2.332, duties of the vice-chairperson.
Motion made and seconded to approve 2.332. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries.
Thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to approve policy 2.410, time and place of meetings.
Motion made and seconded to approve 2.410. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries.
Thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to approve policy 6.550, which is social media policy.
Motion made and seconded to approve 6.550. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries.
Thank you. And I would like to make a motion to approve policy number 7.970, internet acceptable usage.
Motion made and seconded to approve 7.97. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries.
Thank you very much. I think that's it. Oh, excuse me, and, sorry. 71? 981. Oops, yep, sorry about that. I missed that one. So policy 7.981, computer network user agreement. I'd like to make a motion for that to be approved.
Motion made and seconded to approve 7.981. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries.
And then for removal, I'd like to ask that we vote on removing policy 2.261, which is the conflict of interest policy.
Motion made and seconded to remove policy number 2.261. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those...
I know I'm not a voting member, but I just want the public to understand that although we're removing the policy, we're not removing our responsibility to the law. This is already stated in general law. We already have to follow it, so we don't need to have a separate policy on top of it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries.
Thank you, and I'd like to make a motion to remove policy 2.420, open meeting law.
Motion made and seconded to remove policy 2.42. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Good job.
Thank you.
Acceptance of donations and gifts. Donors' Choice Whitcomb School Maker Space Classroom, $302.39.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Valet Buyback Program, Jarwick School, $26.70.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Raytheon Corporation STEM Program Donation of $2,500.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. ECSE Federal Entitlement Grant, Early Childhood Center, $66,162.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Reports of committees. Any reports of committees? Ms. Hennessy.
Thank you very much. Just continuing updates to a lot of policies. If specifically Ms. Matthews or Ms. Ryan, if you have something that you'd like to bring up that we need to take a look at, please let me know. We're just trying to continue to keep on moving through the policy booklet and update things, and as you can tell with some of the removals and the updates, we're just continuing to work through, so please let me know. And Mr. Mayor, did you have anything?
An administrative question, and Mr. Superintendent, if we could all be copied on your meetings and what you're covering in case there is something, because we don't, we're not notified.
Okay. My apologies. I apologize. I thought that posting was going out to everyone, so, okay.
Well, I don't get it.
There's a reason for that.
Thank you. I'm usually at work, so it's not a problem.
No, we should. You're all right.
You should be, so I apologize if that has not been happening. We do have a meeting scheduled for December 19th, so I will make sure that that agenda gets to you all, so thank you.
Great. Anything else? Members' forum. Any members? Ms. Matthews.
I reviewed the warrant and will sign it.
Fantastic. Any other members? Yes, Ms. Ryan.
The rescheduled parent-teacher conference night at the high school and the vendor night is Thursday, December 6th, from 6:00 to 8:30, so those interested in, you don't have to be a parent at the high school, you can come and visit the vendor fair. It's right in the foyer from 6:00 to 8:30. There are crafts, vendors, bake sale, and raffles, so come and check it out. It supports the MHS all-nighter.
Fantastic. Any other members? Ms. Bowden Hettinger.
No other members? Move to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, opposed, carries. Thank you very much.